I call this meeting to Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Ms. Serzak, you take the roll, please.
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Ms. Miner.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here. 3.01 certification in closed session, can I get a motion, please?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, will be exempt from the open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters were identified, and the motions of meeting in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Serzak?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Miner.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, thank you. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda? From anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I approve the approval of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Serzak?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Miner.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, thank you. Brings us to 5.01, announcement superintendent's report. Dr. Heron.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. As you're well aware, today was the first day of the 2016-2017 school year. We were very excited to welcome back our students today. Mr. Kelly and I had a fabulous day. We visited five schools, greeted students getting off buses, enjoyed seeing all of our classrooms ready to welcome our students. Thank you to teachers, principals, and all staff for making this a very positive experience. Thank you also to all board members who took time out of their busy schedules to visit our schools as well. To highlight our first day, we'd like to share a short slideshow with you this evening. In late August, ACT scores for members of the class of 2016 were released, and I'm pleased to report that WJCC students continue to outperform their state and national peers on the college admissions exams. Our students also exceeded state and national percentages in every college readiness benchmark. Additional information regarding the ACT and other measures for the class of 2016 will be part of our portrait of a graduate presentation later in the fall. Currently, the state plans a public release of graduation and dropout rates on September 28th. That concludes my announcements for this evening, Mr. Chair.
Any other board members have any announcements to say, or things they'd like to say?
It was just fun to be out and about on this first day of school. It was a beautiful day, and it was great to see all the excitement in the school. So I went to Lafayette, Matthew Whaley, Matoka, and Rawlsburg, and everything looked like it was, everything was, the kids were happy, and things were under control, so it was a good start of the year.
Great.
It's really exciting for me because I realize the kindergartners will be with us until 2029. So when we do our work, we are really trying to educate them for a world that will be well into the middle of this century, so it's always impressive to me when I do that math and go, yikes. But it's exciting, the children were excited, the staff was excited, the parents were excited. I'd like to congratulate Matoka and Norwich for having their PTA, had a little brunch for the parents, and got folks signed up for PTA, which is a good thing. And we're off to a good start of the school year. Everybody looked excited, the schools look great. So thanks for our custodial staff for the work that they've done.
Absolutely. As Dr. Heron said, we went to five schools. In the first day of schools, you know, it's always that fresh and the excitement of the school year and all of that. You know, the one place where I went where there wasn't really a whole lot going on, people sipping coffee, was at Operations and Transportation. There was, I want to say it's controlled bedlam, but I'm not sure if controlled was the right word there, but they were doing a great job answering the phones and helping people out, and I really appreciate the work that the operations staff did today with transportation. Got word that all the kids got home, so that's a good thing. But also, if you look at the construction projects that we had going on this summer, and they hadn't them all completed and ready, ready to go for the start of, start of school, I think that was great work by our operations team and all that they did. One of the things that also I, I heard when I went around with Dr. Heron, everybody was telling Dr. Heron how well she did a convocation. I'm sorry I had to miss, and everybody was saying it was great convocation and a lot of, lot of good positive feedback from that, so I, I'm really sorry I missed that, but I hear it went swimmingly anyway. Even regardless, I'm not sure. Maybe because, but. Any other announcements, reports? Brings us to citizens' comments. Do we have speaker cards? Dr. Beers?
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting, and they are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's, it is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Therefore, we ask that citizens not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the Board requests that all speakers be framed for making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board may not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker's allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and we ask that you respect that limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my directions are concluded.
Thank you. Mrs. Cook?
Philip Kennedy, please.
Good evening. My name is Philip Kennedy. I am a lifelong resident of Williamsburg James City County Schools. I'd like to address some concerns that I have with our school safety, particularly school safety, and the data that's on Virginia Department of Education's website. As we all know, Virginia ranks number one in the nation for students referred to law enforcement. That's not something we should be proud of. And when I look at the data from 2012 to 2014, War Hill has had an 83% increase in disorderly or disruptive behavior offenses as reported to Department of Ed. The bigger concern is Lafayette. Lafayette has had a 395% increase in disorderly or disruptive behavior from 2012 to the most recent data that's been released on Virginia Department of Education's website. That is a huge increase. Furthermore, when we look at the elementary schools, DJ Montague and, the school in Grove just left me.
James River.
And James River has more disorderly and disruptive behavior offenses reported to the state than our seven other elementary schools combined. So that tells me there is some leadership issues going on at those schools. These numbers are that disproportionate, and we have a high school like James Blair, I mean, the Jamestown, numbers are on a decrease. So something is going on in the buildings when the numbers are this far apart in our community. As we know, we have achievement gaps that exist in our schools. And there was a quote in the paper by Mr. Kelly, and the quote stated, "We aren't looking to make them equal, but to raise the lower level." If that is the voice of the Board, that tells me we have a systemic problem in our schools. We should be looking to raise all the kids up to an equal level. If they don't meet that level, that's fine, but we should not have leadership quoted in the paper making those type of statements. If that statement is inaccurate, that's something that leadership needs to make with the reporter who reported it and printed it. But we should not be making comments in papers like this because that leads to bigger problems in our community when we have long been battling this achievement gap between Caucasians and African-Americans and other minority groups. That statement alone should be unacceptable to every single board member. And the data that I just said, that came from the school safety report from Virginia Department of Education. And if a business is looking to move somewhere, I would say I would not move to anywhere where Lafayette kids go until the issue is addressed. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Okay, thank you. That takes us 7.01, RFP for superintendent's search firm. Mrs. Taylor and/or Mrs. Cook?
All right, so at our last meeting, we discussed the search for a search, and we have continued on with that and getting feedback from all of the board members. Ms. Cook and I came together to, to start working on this, this living document, if you will. And we have several things that we need to talk about as a board, including what type of language we want to use to describe links to James City County schools, the scope of services we're going to use, and the evaluation criteria, and the assigned weight for each of those criteria that are listed. We also need to think about who is going to serve on our evaluation committee, and we need to talk about, let's see, the consensus on the RFP as a whole so we can begin advertising that. Is there anything else?
No.
So for, so what was, let's just take that one at a time. The first one is the descriptive information?
Yes.
Correct. Do you, do you want?
Sure.
Do you, I was just curious if Ms. Hall wanted to say anything. Do you want to just hang out until, do you want to say anything, Kitty? Any? Before we dive in, I just thought, give her an opportunity to say, provide any words of wisdom.
I don't know about words of wisdom, but I'm certainly here at your disposal to answer any questions that you have about the RFP process, if there's anything that I can answer, or if you need some clarification on any of those points. We've been working on a very preliminary draft, just so you'd have something to look at and to consider as you're having this conversation.
Speak up, please.
Can you just?
Salary season, can you hear me now?
Actually, I don't think, I don't think there's any, any speaker associated with that. That goes over to the TV, so just going to need to.
Okay, sorry.
Project, I guess. Okay, good. Thank you for the work, work that you've done. It's a, it's a yeoman's effort that you put in, and all the, all the RFPs that you've shared with us, that was a great cross-section, and a great, different strategies towards that, so I really appreciate, appreciated that.
As the Board considers what you're, what you want to do, and what sections that you may want to add your own input into, this RFP will be designed specifically for Williamsburg James City County Schools, whereas some of the other ones you've looked at were specific for those localities.
Great, thank you. So one of the things, the first was the background for, I don't know, does any board member have any, any concerns about what's in here? I mean, this is for the search firm and not necessarily for the advertisements, so. I personally was fine with the background, just.
I think it's succinct enough.
Right.
I mean, the rest of the document isn't, so it's nice to have something succinct.
I think you might want to point out that we're in, you know, next to the nationally recognized university for the search firm, like, is that a better idea about the kind and caliber of person we would be looking for? And that we're, you know, nationally recognized historic area.
Yes.
I think that would be helpful to any firm who's putting the RFP.
True. But I hope they do a little research, too.
What's that?
I'd hope they do a little research, too, and figure that out.
Why?
But, oh, but yeah, that's good. Anything else we want to, think we should add to the background? Number two?
Scope of services.
What was the question, question there as far as, is descriptive enough, not descriptive, or? I was pretty comfortable with the entire document, so if I keep saying that, just.
Yeah, I was too.
Because basically, this, this is when we, we took the three different RFPs, and we went through them, and then we kind of culled what we thought were important, right?
Yeah.
And this used the Chesterfield model as the, as the sort of baseline, and then tweaked from there?
I think, I think that it's helpful to, for the community to know that in developing the superintendent profile, the expectation is that the consultant will be getting input from across the broad specterms of the community.
Yeah.
That's, that's a key.
Yeah, this is, this is just the first step in the process. There will be public forums and a bit, opportunity for, for public input, for sure, before we go forward with that.
Right, for the candidate, but I think it's important that the consulting firm be aware.
So everybody's good with page six, the first section of pages?
Page five.
Yes.
Last paragraph of five and the first of six.
Correct.
Yep.
All right, the next piece may have more conversation because we have the evaluation criteria with the assigned weight, and some people may think some things carry more weight
Evaluation criteria five, right?
Yeah, pages six and seven.
Six, not the evaluate applications? Where are we?
Evaluation and award.
Section five.
Section five.
It starts at the bottom of page six, and it goes over to page seven.
Oh, okay. I did have a question about the evaluation of the applications.
Okay.
Do we have something in here, or did we decide that we were going to talk about making sure that the search firm did not necessarily serve up members that they are representing?
So Ms. Hall and I, and Holly, Ms. Taylor, we've discussed that at length, and actually, Ms. Hall's working on some questions. So the next, so if this hits the street, and then it's out for 30 days, and then proposals come back in, those proposals would then be evaluated, and then the Board would have opportunities to send questions or interview each firm. And so Ms. Hall has, is drafting some questions that would be appropriate at that point, because some of these questions about that specific topic, about conflict of interest, the firms, might be addressed in the proposals.
Okay.
Did I represent that fairly?
I was looking at it, I guess it's on page eight, number four, information.
I get through six and seven first before we get to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I appreciate.
No, I was trying to answer the, the question about, I think that's important, that needs to be put in here, and that is who they represent. And I think all I'm saying is it could be put right into the document, but that should be a piece of information.
Yeah, yeah. Page eight, okay.
That's all.
Yeah. The, so the breakdown of the, the, the.
Rating.
Rating, 20, 20, 30, 10, 20. Demonstration of the firm's ability to provide executive 20, experience and qualifications of the proposed personnel assigned to provide services, 20, process plan to conduct the search, 30, timeline, 10, proposed cost, 20. There's all, comfortable with those percentages.
Were they similar, was this a similar weight to Chesterfield?
Yes. Didn't we break out number one and two?
Yes. We did. We added the qualifications of the proposed personnel assigned to provide services.
And that gets added. The firm might be qualified, but if they give us their new hire.
Yes, okay.
I am concerned about this timeline for completing the recruitment process. We're on a crunch.
Yes, we are.
And I think a little bit more weight should be added to that because I think we have to, we have to get done with this.
I'm almost thinking less weight should be asked, should be done there, should just be, it's got to be done. It's not, it's not like it's, if you can or can't get it done by February 15th, it's got to be done. So it's kind of, that's a, that's a no breaker criteria. If you can't get it done by.
More weight.
If you can't get it, well, that would, that would be a filter for me. If they can't get it done by February, then they don't even consider them, and they don't even get to this criteria because, because that's, it's got to be done.
Well, it almost falls under the process to conduct the search would have the timeline built in. I mean, almost, if the process does not include a timeline that is conducive to.
The law.
You know what I mean?
Like, why, why?
I mean, it, I don't know.
Right.
I don't want, I don't want it to look like, or have, have them think, oh, the timeline's not that important to us, by giving it a little weight, whereas if it's an assumption, maybe it doesn't need to be in here at all, or it could be included in, in three.
It's listed on the general duties.
Yeah.
That my sources key deliverables including the appointment date of February 7, 2017, that's, to me, that's pretty clear.
Yes.
So it's almost, the only other reason I would say that is if somebody comes up with an unrealistic timeline.
Right, where they get it done by October?
Yeah. And, and, or whatever it is, it's like.
Well, it's weighted too close towards February.
It's like, are you sure you can get all this done by February 7? I guess that's what I was, yeah.
Right. The one, the one challenge for a firm proposing on this is that we had to do our part. The seven of us, we have to, A, get this on the street, B, get them back, evaluate them, hire somebody in time to get, and then, and then support the process throughout, so. So it, there's a little bit, they want to leave a timeline in there, just make sure they cover it in their proposal to, although they should, but, you know, to understand.
Actually, I think it would be helpful to see the timeline so that we can say that they're going, the deliverables of a profile on an applicant and brochure to go out for recruitment will be done by X date.
Yeah, right. That's good.
We'll be getting community input about qualifications at X minus days before that, so that we know that they're going to be doing those, the things that are in the scope need to be delineated pretty quickly.
And also, and also what, what they need us to do.
Right.
We need to do this done by that.
Right.
Because I'd like to block off my calendar.
Yes, exactly.
And block it off now to February, you'd be good. So, so we'll just, we'll leave the, leave the weighting criteria that is.
Well, what I'm thinking is, what about including four with three, and weighting that 40? So.
That's what I was thinking.
Process plan and timeline? Right. Yes. Because that's, that's really critical to what we need to accomplish as a board.
Can, can I, can I propose that we take that 10 and put five in three and five in one?
What?
Demonstration of firm's ability to provide executive school, make that 25, executive school service.
And make the other 35?
Make the other one 35.
Okay.
Sure.
So 25.
For number one.
20.
35.
35.
Gone.
Gone.
Twenty.
And then 20, okay.
Okay, Holly, you're on a roll.
Wait, can we go back to page eight? What was that?
We haven't gone back to page eight, we have to get, we're moving to page eight now. Unless Holly has something before that that we have to talk about. Dr. Beers, what was the page eight? When she thought we should put it?
February 7. It's number two. It's the first thing under general duties.
General.
I'm assuming that's 180.
Where was, where was that again? I'm sorry.
180.
Where was that again?
Roman numeral four, scope of services. It's page five.
Five, oh, I thought we were on page eight, I'm sorry.
It's eight on five, is that what you're talking about?
Were you looking at the date? Is that what you want? February 7?
Oh, I see.
Oh, yep, got it, yep.
It's very first thing.
Yep, 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 yep.
Four.
So I thought.
And, and A and B, actually, it's, it's repeated. And actually, it says a project timeline that does identify milestones and key deliverables including the appointment date.
So it, yeah, it's covered.
No, I, I, I thought it was, it was clear to me.
Is there something in there that I'm not reading about the, asking the vendor to separate the initial selection criteria from the final selection criteria? Did we put anything in there? That was in Newport News School, that, they actually had different criteria. The initial selection criteria was different than the final selection criteria. It narrowed down, like.
Yeah.
You need to have at least these things, and then.
Right, so, so page six, finalized superintendent selection? Consultant available negotiate assistance, make salary and compensation recommendations?
Is that?
Is that what you're looking at, or?
I, when you look at Newport News, theirs had a, they actually broke it out so that they had some verbiage in there that said the vendor would, would actually have two different kinds of criteria for the initial selection versus the final selection. It was like a, you know, like, there's, this is what, you need to have at least these kind of qualifications to just be in the applicant pool, but then the final selection criteria was very, took all of the community input, took the, what was deemed most important to the school system, and then honed in on those traits. That, do you remember any of that in the?
Vague, I mean, yes, that's, now that you're saying that, but I wonder if that's, if that will become apparent in the proposals.
Okay, maybe so.
Yeah. Holly, what's your next one? You're on a roll now, let's go.
Oh, and also, one other thing about the unsolicited, taking, accommodating unsolicited applications and nominations to provide access to those individuals in the initial screening process. That was also in Newport News's. This was in that email that I sent to you guys.
So if you post a position. Aren't then all? I guess I, I don't, can you help me understand what you're trying to get at there?
Just for perspective, we did it last time.
Yeah.
Is that we advertised, and then all of the applications came to a, the school system, to a post office box. So we got to see everybody who applied, not just potential to be, they come to the search firm, the search firm filters, and then gives us, last time we did this, that all applicants came to a post office box in Williamsburg, which came to the school board, and so we got to see all.
The school board read all the applications.
Read all the applications, right.
We did that for one search, and the other search, we did the other way.
Right.
That they read it out the initials and then made recommendations on the ones we should.
And so that way.
It would be my preference to see all of them.
Yeah, that way, that way, there's like.
Less chance for.
Transparency, because you see everybody.
Yes.
So.
Okay, okay, then if, if that's the way we handle it.
That's the way I would expect to, expect this to do at this time as well. Would be my expectation. Would be my expectation. Holly.
One of the things we need to consider is who's going to serve on the evaluation committee.
My expectation is that there's seven people on the evaluation.
I would, I would support that. Me too.
Does that work?
Okay.
We'll pick seven, the first seven board members that show up will do that.
Do we have a chair if I can?
As far as I'm concerned, they can play rock, paper, scissors and figure that out.
Kitty's shaking her head no.
No, there's not a chair.
There's no chair.
No.
So nobody directs anything.
Kitty does. Kitty guides us according to the law.
That's good.
Which is different than the candidate.
Okay.
So once we make these edits, can we say that we've come to a consensus?
Yes.
I think so.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I, my goal would be to get this on the street as soon as we can so that, because our clocks are, keeps ticking.
Good job, Holly and Kira.
Thank you.
And Kitty.
Thank you.
You guys, wonderful with your inputs, so thank you. Typically, it's not uncommon for legal to sit on the review committee. So in lieu of that, which I don't think really, we've got Kitty's expertise, one step, one interim step would be between selection committee and issuing a contract with the successful, have it go through, have the, have it go through a legal-
A legal review of the contract.
Yes, review.
Yeah, that seems good.
So does that, does that sound?
That's good.
So we'll integrate legal at that point, but really quick, I just want to circle back to Dr. Beers. You were saying-
Go ahead. No, I want Kitty to get back to the podium in a minute.
Dr. Beers, you were saying something about wanting to have something in the RFP about the conflict of interest of the post firm. And I just wanted to, I don't think that's directly addressed here, but maybe Ms. Hall would like, because she, you know, she's thought about it a lot and is familiar with the, the industry. And so, did you have any questions or that? Are you okay with the way it is now?
Well, I'd like to have that information before we, you know, start talking to them. I think they ought to, that ought to be part of when they complete an application, that they include a list of, you know, districts where they, that they represent.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. Oh, okay.
I mean, am I?
No.
Doesn't it make sense?
No.
You just make it one of the requirements, is, you know, list of, you know?
Okay.
The districts.
Okay. That's easy enough.
Kitty, can I have you come back to the microphone one sec? Can I have you back to the microphone one second?
The microphone that doesn't work?
It works, because it goes on TV, it just doesn't work in broadcast here.
For us to go?
Yes, I'm assuming it works. Mic running. So we make the edits here, we get it to you, not putting words in a guy's mouth, but let's just call it Friday, goes out on the streets. What, what kind of timeline am I looking at?
This will need to be publicly advertised, and so in order, if you, if you get it to me on Friday, we've missed the Saturday publication date, so the earliest it would go out is next Wednesday.
Okay.
How do we get it out earlier? How do we get it on Saturday?
Tomorrow noon. Tomorrow noon.
Ooh, deli.
Yeah, to get it in Saturday's publication.
Ooh, deli.
Assuming that we've got a final RFP.
We get it.
Kira's having to get it done. So we advertise it Saturday, which is-
10.
10, thank you. Out there for 30 days, 40, that's the 9th of October.
October 10.
October 10. So then we would have to evaluate it sometime near there.
Depending on how many proposals you get.
Right.
You're going to be doing individual evaluations first as, as doing your own individual evaluation yourself.
Okay.
Then you would send me your score sheets. I would compile a summary sheet and have that ready for the first team meeting. That's when you would look at the summary sheet and would identify, short list of firms.
Okay, so, so say, you'd say the 10th individual would take a week, less than a week?
Depends on how many you get. Do you have 12 to 14 proposals?
Because what I'm, what I'm looking towards is when do we schedule a-
Board meeting.
Board meeting, special board meeting to evaluate the RFPs. So if, folks can look at your calendars sometime-
So if we do an individual score sheet to Kitty, then we would get together after that to look at it.
And when the proposals come in, you're not, you're not going to be trying to figure this out on your own. I will be sending you out an email with the evaluation materials, with a breakdown of what it would look like, when I would expect to have those turned in to me, and when we could expect to have an initial meeting. We can tweak that some-
Are you going to call out anybody that's non-responsive for us?
RFPs, as long as they submit a proposal, they're responsive.
They're responsive.
Yes. I mean, clearly, the only time you would give anybody a zero on a score is if they just completely omit what you had asked for. That's a zero, and that reflects in the scoring.
All right. So if everybody would just take a gander at your October cal, mid-October calendar and send out some dates and see what we can get for review, a review time to, to keep this process rolling, because October is scarily close to Fe, February for me, but we have to keep, we have to keep rolling, and we have to meet all of the wickets that we have to meet. So thank you for your help, and I appreciate, I really appreciate that.
For those of you that have served on RFP committees with me in the past, I'm a hard taskmaster. Keep your feet to the fire, get it done.
I'll serve it done.
Thank you.
You're a good reference for that, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Holly, thank you, Kira, for the, your good work in that, putting that draft together. It's, keep moving, moving the ball down the field. Proposed general items, 8.01, authorization, authorization to permit city-county use of school buses. Dr. Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. This general item is to approve the use of school buses by the City of Williamsburg and Jame City County. It's an annual request, and Mr. Snipes is here to talk about it. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Good evening, school board members, board chair. Periodically, WJCC schools receives requests from the City of Williamsburg and the Jame City County to use school buses, usually for parks and recreation. Tonight, the superintendent is asking you to recommend the use of those school buses for that, for that purpose.
Questions from board members?
Is this a reimbursement?
No, no reimbursement, no reimbursement. The costs associated are paid by the, by the governing body, not by the school.
Yes, it is. To answer your term question, yes.
We get money back from them.
We get money back from them. There's a mileage rate, and they pay the bus drivers?
They pay the bus drivers for their, for their time.
For their hours.
And then as far as mileage and maintenance and gas, no, that stuff?
You know, that, that is not incorporated, as, as far as I know. We just pay for the-
They pay, they pay for the labor.
They pay for the labor.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
This is just a qu, general question, like what kind of, how's this typically work? Like, how are they using the buses?
Well, typically, the summer school, summer parks and rec uses our buses to go on field trips.
So parks and rec, okay.
Those kind of things.
Okay, so field trips for parks and rec, for the most part?
That's, that's predominantly what they use the buses for.
And this is something we do annually, every year, we just look at this.
We do this annually, every year. Comes back to you every, at this time.
Got you. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Snipes. 8.02, June preliminary financials and year-end spending plan. Dr. Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Berta is here tonight to present the financial report and end-of-year spending plan, June 2016. Ms. Berta, come back here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mrs. Berta.
Members of the board. Dr. Hare. At your station, I also placed an updated bus replacement cycle, since that is going to be part of our conversation this evening. Please keep in mind that these are preliminary. We have not gone through our external audit, which occurs at the end of this month, but we try to get it as close as possible before we go through that audit so that we can bring forward our requests to the city and county. At year-end, you will see that we had available $3,448,549 or 2.7% of our operating budget. From that, almost 3.5 million, we are requesting band uniforms for our three high schools. Those are on a 10-year replacement cycle. They are allocated at $40,000 per high school, and we would like to go ahead and take care of all three high schools all in one, one year so they can have replaced band uniforms. Secondly, is the Lafayette High School Auxiliary Gym. As you will recall, during the budget process, we received funding from the city and county for a portion of the Lafayette Auxiliary Gym with the understanding that we would contribute dollars from our year-end spending plan to support that project. We had initially talked about $1 million towards that project. We are proposing $1 million and a half towards that project, just from several design meetings that we've had with the committee that's been formed at Lafayette High School. There's some complexities with the Lafayette site, that we want to allow ourselves some contingency funding to support that project and make sure that we have enough funding available. So we're asking for 1.5 million to support that project. Additionally, we are asking for $500,000 to support the value engineering and construction management of that project so that we can ensure that everything's done in code and have a third party to evaluate that, those items for us. And the last item in the spending plan is six replacement buses. As you will recall, during the budget process, there were 10 buses that were coming up for replacement because of age. They meet the 15-year requirement. We made a decision collectively to push those bus replacements to fiscal year 18. Looking at our year-end spending plan, we think it's a wise decision based on information from the governor recently about revenue projections at the state level, as well as what we know we're facing with an increased VRS rate increase for next year. We are proposing that we ask for six of those 10 replacement buses for $650,000. That will allow us to request four in our process for budget in the upcoming budget cycle to alleviate some of that pressure and maintain our replacement cycle. So those are our four items that we're asking for, and would like your approval at the next meeting so we can push forward to the city and county and seek their approval as well. With that being said, there will be about a half of a percent of our budget to return to the city and county, $678,549. So that is our preliminary presentation, and I will be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Board members?
I did speak with Andy Lynn today at Lafayette High School. I asked him how the auxiliary gym planning was going. He was very happy with the, everything that he's, you know, all of his meetings and the way the design's looking, he's very happy with it. So that, as a board member, gives me a lot of confidence that approving this would be a good thing.
Just a quick question. Do, how much carryover money are we going to take with us?
Carryover money are we going to take?
From, from this fiscal year to the next fiscal year? Do we carry money over?
We are not allowed to carry a fund balance. According to the contract, any money that is remaining, we may come forward with a year and spending plan request, as we've done. Otherwise, the money is returned to both our funding partners.
We used to have a fund balance.
Boy, okay.
They don't let us do that anymore.
It varies by the contract. This contract does not allow.
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, is there a reason we just didn't go ahead and put in the 10, 10 bus replacements here?
In conversations that I've had with the county, the county is banking on a portion of funding to come back to them to support the CIP for future years.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, so I feel like that's the right thing to do to help maintain our capital improvement plan going forward in those good communicative relationships that we've developed with the county and city.
Can you help the board and the public understand the, what, what might constitute the, the year-end?
Absolutely. The 3.5 million almost is comprised of 2.3 million in attrition. We talk about attrition, where we build a budget based on seasoned employees, those employees retire, we hire new individuals that typically are paid less money and have lower benefit cost to the division. So that's $2.3 million of that 3.5. Additionally, we were fortunate this year to save money in fuel cost. We saved $680,000 in vehicle fuel, and that attributes right into your utilities as well. So we saved $481,000 in utilities. So that is our 3.5, is utilities, fuel, and attrition.
And in that, in the budget we're in now, we ratcheted back a little bit on that attrition, right? So there's a little-
We did. We did.
Would it be possible, when you come back with this, at the next meeting, for you to have dates for us on, because the next step, assuming board approval, is to back over to the localities? So if we could know what those dates are, so we could put them on our calendars as appropriate?
Yep.
Any other board member comments? The, the 500,000 for value engineering and construction management, that numbers, how is that number based?
That's an estimate that I received from Mr. Robertson, based on other projects that we've done within the division, and it leaves us a little bit for contingency, again, on the project. We, we know we're faced with some ingress egress issues that have already been identified on that site, so that will help us in the overall project budget.
Okay, just, it seems like a big number to me, so it's just, so there's, there's contingency in there for the, for the overall project as well as value and construction management. So if we don't spend, so if we don't spend the 500,000, that number, that number would be additional to going back to the county.
Correct.
Okay.
Offhand, what was the amount for the construction management for Blair, as we did offer? That's okay, you consented to make this.
$586,000.
Okay, thank you.
So, so 500,000 for a $2.5 million project and, no.
Yeah.
And then how much for a $21 million project?
It's 586, is what he's-
Can someone just?
Hence my question.
Okay, that, that's because it's an estimate.
Yeah. It's a big estimate.
It's a big estimate.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so, but part of, part of that would also be contingency and over, and overruns, because we haven't got the budget yet, not the video on the project, so.
Okay.
It'd be nice if that, if all those numbers came in less, if they could turn into one or two more buses, but.
Yeah. So, so is that possible? So let's say rather, that, that if it comes in less than that, instead of purchasing six buses, we could?
That could certainly be part of our negotiation that we discuss with city and county, if that's the way that we want to frame it and present it.
That would be nice. I mean, I'd, I'd rather keep the money in the school system.
Yeah. I would like to thank, thank, thank you for the coordination with the finances, finance offices of both the city and the county and kind of talking through this, so that they're all, everybody's aware of where, of our direction. You know, you look at, you look at 3.5 million left over on about 125 million, that's really not a, not a bad, bad way to manage, particularly when you can't go, you can't go over. So you have to be under the, the million dollars roughly in, in, in energy costs that we're, we're below, or it's just a sign of management of our operations and our, obviously a little bit of, of fuel costs as well, but, but a lot of fuel costs as well, too, probably. So all in all, I think it's a very well, good job, Robert.
Thank you.
Any other conversation from board members on this?
So if we decide as a board that we would like any savings, like to request that any savings from the auxiliary gym, value engineering, and construction manager to purchase bus, buses, then I guess I'd like to understand how that impacts the original request to purchase six with the four, and, so just what the, what the ripple effect of that is, because if it's a replacement, then it has ripple effect with what we were already planning, right?
It would eliminate the request from coming through your 2018 budget, operating budget.
Okay, so, all right.
We just have to figure out a way to frame it, so that all parties understand what's going to happen with the funding, if it's left over.
Right.
Right, so as, so as we go to, go to, go to contract on the Lafayette Gym, if we come up with an extra couple hundred, finance people can all talk again, the city and county will already have had their 680, whatever it was, and then we can say, do you want that money back, or do you want us to turn it to buses, or do you want us to turn in some portion of buses and, and return funds and that kind of thing? So we can come to that discussion, when we, we can cross that bridge when we come to that.
Which, which leads to the other conversation about the revenue issues at the state. So I think that's going to have an impact on what happens, I think, just on where the money goes at the, as we build the 2018 budget.
We know there's an impact, we just won't know until they come back together in December in session.
Right, great. But that is on the horizon. That storm is brewing on the horizon.
So before we go bus happy, I guess we need to know that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Burdo, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ms. Burdo. It's always good to get a report where everything is, expenses are below and budget.
8.03, award of contract for invitation for bid number 171115, Phase 1B construction in middle school.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. This is the second meeting when the board has the opportunity to discuss the award for the Phase 1B construction of the new middle school. A good opportunity to ask questions at the last meeting, and this is another opportunity to talk about the new middle school and the award of the bid. Some information has been added to your, your packet from last time. Mr. Snipes?
Hi, good evening again. As you recall, Phase 1A of this, the demolition of James Blair is occurring right now, and as of today, all things left are standing with the gym, but we heard it go down while we were in a meeting today, so.
Yeah, I saw that noon it was standing, and I came by, I was like, it is nothing.
It's, it's Phase 1A, so we.
I made loud noises, I felt.
We have some, some removal of some, some debris. But the target date to open the new school, of course, is 2018, and it's the division's intent to construct a 608-student middle school here on this site. A three-story building of approximately 109,000 square feet. An invitation was, for bid was sent out on July 15th and returned on August the 17th. And the award for the bid is based on the lowest and most responsive bid for total base bid. There are also some alternate bid items, three alternate bid items. One is a provided folding partition in the auditorium. The second is a fitness room, and the third is a whole building generator, which will also be considered, but will not, would not be the basis of the award. Five contractors responded to this bid. Of, of those five, Oyster Point Construction was the lowest and most responsive, with the base bid of 21,330, excuse me, 339,000. The alternate bids totaled $478,000. This favorable bid will allow three bid alternates, alternates to be performed for a total construction of $21,817,000. Oyster Point bid is about 84% of the budget at CIP, and is about 88% of the remaining budget. Kitty Hall, from Purchasing, Howard Collins, Alan Robertson, Christina Burdo are here to answer any questions you may have.
Board member comments?
No, it was actually interesting that the, the bids themselves weren't that skewed, there was nothing skewed from the others, so I'm comfortable with the Oyster Point. It's nothing remarkable. Thank you for all your work.
This is exciting.
Yeah.
Oyster Point has built what for us previously?
Hornsby and Blake.
Blake.
Okay.
The alternative, particularly alternative three, the whole building capacity complete with all associated work, if we were, if we, if we weren't looking at making it a shelter, we would have, we could have a smaller generator, right?
I can let Alan Robertson ask that question, he did the research on that.
Correct.
Okay. So is the, is the alternative bid, bid three here, the plus up from a standard generator to a generator that's a whole building generator?
That's correct. And let me emphasize, a whole building is a little misleading. It's to create a shelter, which, which powers a number of things. It's not really everything in the building.
Right, but primarily, it's a majority of the AC.
I can tell you exactly what it is, just to be, it's all the emergency lighting, all of the instructional technology, the IT, the PA system, the kitchen and A-trac for the gym and cafeteria areas. It's basically where you would serve as a shelter, if you had people coming into the building.
Do we have any other schools that are set up like that in WJCC?
Yes. It varies depending on exactly what they do, but we have four schools that actually serve as a shelter, or could be. Let me just run down very quickly. James River, Stonehouse, Blaton, Hornsby, and War Hill. But there is a difference between them. The three largest ones, that are more like what you're talking about for this one, are James River and Hornsby and War Hill. They are looked at by the community, and even one of them, I think it's Hornsby and War Hill, so it's two, are part of the plan, that if we ever had people from the lower peninsula from flooding and a big hurricane come up this way, that's where they would be housed.
Who owns that, not that this is the vote, but to hear, who owns that emergency management plant? Who's?
It's the counties.
It's, it's James and Gunn?
Well, actually, they both have one, since we're part of two jurisdictions. You have the city plan as well as the county.
Right, and so the, in the county's plan, it's Hornsby and Blaton is where they would actually make those.
They actually, part of what, it's an interesting history. James River was built so that if, it was a shelter because of the lower portion of the community, seeing the Stonehouse. There's, originally were smaller generators, but because of the flooding potential for James River, they actually, the county came back and enlarged the generator there, so that it's almost as large as the ones I just mentioned, that it can serve as a major shelter.
Okay. I've learned at least one thing, though.
Go ahead.
That's good. Any other, any other questions about the proposed bid? Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. 8.04, easement conveyance at James Blair Middle School. Dr. Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. This agenda item is to do with the easement conveyance at the new middle school, and Mr. Snipes is here to explain what the city is requesting. Thank you, sir.
You'll see there's an area of, of James Blair, as it used to sit before the demolition. As a condition of the city's site plan, approval for the new James Blair Middle School, and at no cost to the county or the school board, is necessary to grant a non-exclusive sanitary slash water easement and conveyance of land to the city for reconfiguration and widening of Ironbound Road and Long Hill Road. The conveyance and easement would provide permanent access to the school board property at the intersection of Ironbound and Long Hill. Tonight, we've asked Aaron Small, the City of Winslow engineer, to be here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, and this was, this was, even for Small, good to see you again.
Thank you.
This was a condition of the site plan approval?
Yes.
Okay. And this, this is basically for road improvements and that?
Well, the, the right-of-way, there's three portions that he mentioned. One is the conveyance, the water easement, which will be for the water meter, which is located, if you look up on your screens, right in this area.
Okay.
There's a sewer easement towards the back here, and then the rest of it is the right-of-way that'll allow us to realign the intersection across here with the Aldi's entrance across the way, and give us a little further distance from Richmond Road, and we're also signalizing that intersection.
So, just so I understand, so that whole road itself is going to be shifted to the left?
The, Long Hill Road is actually going to be shifted over this way.
Oh, okay.
About 100 feet, center line to center line, so that it'll line up with the entrance across the way. You can see they're offset right now, and hence the reason for the orange one-way.
Yeah, okay, so that'll be much better for track.
It'll be much better, and it'll, we're also signalizing the intersection, so it'll make it easier to turn out and in. We're widening also Ironbound Road to provide three lanes coming off of Richmond Road, so there'll be a dedicated right, a through, and a left for the shopping center. And then that'll continue straight through, and there'll be a dedicated right turn lane into the shopping center. And then a vocally Phase 2 of our road project will allow us to widen for three lanes going out between Long Hill and Richmond Road.
And what's the timing on that, relative to the opening of the school in 2018?
Our schedule is, right now, to be done about a month or so before school opens. We've timed it, we've been working and I've been working on it.
Can we move it up to those six months before, just to give?
Well, we originally did have it that far before, but I can blame VDOT for delaying of the contracts. He said he can't.
As you all, as you all.
That's true. I have my own evidence.
So, Mr. Small, so the land in the lower right corner that we're conveying to you, or the right-of-way, is becoming road?
It is becoming roadway, yes. And then the area that's over here to the right, will probably end up, will keep it as right-of-way. That pavement will go away, but it will allow us to probably, that's where we're looking, that stormwater management or something in that area. So that's going to have to be utilized.
And they'll do nice plantings and make it?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
It's all about the aesthetic.
The other, the other part of the aesthetic that we're planning on doing, Ironbound Road is dedicated, back in 2008, to be an underground wiring corridor. And so part of the project that the city's doing, we're undergrounding the wiring from the intersection, all the way down Ironbound to Middle Street in this phase. Eventually, we'll take it further on out.
So it looks.
And that'll include some of the portion up Long Hill, but we can't go but so far with that. So some of those poles will actually just have to be relocated.
So I think this is great, because I think it'll make for a real attractive curb appeal for the school, hopefully.
Because it's the city, that's what they do.
Oh, yes.
And this project's been in the works for a long, long time, a lot longer than even, I mean, this project was started back when James Blair was previously a school, so this hasn't been coming along, it's just what it is, is the funding opportunity. We were able to apply for funding, knowing that James Blair was coming.
Okay.
And that actually helped us accelerate it and acquire that funds.
It appealed to VDOT.
Yes, he's blaming VDOT for that again.
Put us much higher on the priority.
Put us higher on the priority list, you've got to create the issue for VDOT.
So will we lose any of the parking? Is there parking back there on the original plan?
No. If you look at the site plan that was done by your site engineers, they're going to reconfigure this parking lot in the front, to allow everything to flow through a little better. We are maintaining this entrance. It will become a right-in, right-out entrance, that'll actually be closed most of the time, or during, in, you know, not most of the time, but only during bus loading and unloading, school start times. Basically to prevent a traffic nightmare internal to the site. We're also allowing this to remain open, and we actually allowed this to be widened, even though it is offset from our Middle Street intersection. We did make some, do some things to try to make it easier to see turning in and out of that entrance.
Taking the dip out helps.
And we did take the dip out, yeah.
Thank you. We all appreciate it.
Aaron, thank you, very helpful, very helpful.
Thanks, Ms. Small.
Appreciate it.
So at the next meeting, will we get a resolution to be made?
Oh, yeah, all this stuff goes on the agenda, actually.
Actually, I was going to ask if we could put this and 8.01 perhaps on the consent and send agenda. I think that's workable.
I'd like to just do 8.04, I mean, action item, just because it's a land, it's a land item, maybe moving and giving up land, I think it's just, it needs to be an action.
8.01, can that?
Okay. Yeah, 8.01's fine. I think, I just think it needs to be 8.04, just to be an action. 8.05, Stonehouse Elementary School chiller replacement, somehow I think Mr. Snipes could back up.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Yes, this is in the fiscal year 2017 capital approval plan, and Mr. Snipes is back again to tell us about it.
Yes, the, the Stonehouse chiller replacement was a recommendation for Faithful and Gold to replace in 2017. It has passed its useful life. Stonehouse was built in 2000, it has not been repaired or changed out, but we're having a lot of work orders and a lot of maintenance on it. So what we're recommending tonight is that we do a cooperative contract through Virginia Beach Public Schools with Colonial Web. This co-op will allow us to quote-unquote "piggyback" on their pricing. It will help us install a 170-ton air-cooled chiller at Stonehouse, which will be put in after the cooling season, but before the summer of 2018.
Questions from board members? Anybody still remember Stonehouse as being brand new?
I do.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I just was doing the math, it's like, 60, it's kind of like, I don't know where it went.
Running day, recutting, dedication.
I can think of it, it's brand new.
Yeah, same here.
It's our new school, it's not.
Yeah, it's brand new.
I was just telling Dr. Heron that I wanted to make a correction on your value engineering. I was thinking construction management. Construction management for the middle school was about 558, value engineering was about 125.
Correct.
Right. Good. Any other questions on Stonehouse Elementary? Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Contract renewal of Power School Assessment and Analytics for fiscal year 2017. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. This is a contract renewal, it's an assessment system we've used for a period of time, and Mr. Thorpe is here to explain what we're requesting today. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Heron. The purpose of this agenda item is to request the approval of this year's contract with Power School Assessment and Analytics. In accordance with policy DJ, we are bringing contracts and expenditures above $100,000 to you for approval. The amount for this contract is in this year's budgeted, approved budget, and we're seeking your approval for the release of these funds. At your workstation, I responded to a school board question that came in earlier today, requesting a comparison between Power School Assessment Analytics and MAPS, and going to speak a little bit to that, but hopefully that will have helped to answer that question. So most of our school division actually knows this online assessment platform as interactive achievement. In December of 2015, Power School purchased interactive achievement, and it has become now Power School Assessment and Analytics. Power School Assessment and Analytics, bless you. Power School Assessment and Analytics is designed to measure student achievement on what's been taught and learned. This is different than the MAPS test that we reviewed earlier this summer. MAPS is designed to measure student growth. This platform allows students to show proficiency with skills that the teacher has explicitly taught. Power School Assessment and Analytics provides a variety of assessment items in a bank that are aligned with the Virginia SOL curriculum. It also empowers teacher with data by student and standard to inform instruction and to help teachers to plan to fill any learning gaps that are found. So here's how we use it. We select a priority standard, one whose mastery is crucial to future learning, and build a short assessment with online items from the assessment bank. After the skill has been taught, our teachers and teams provide this short assessment for its students, and use the results to plan for students in need of support. The use of Power School Assessment and Analytics is important to our goal, to reflect on our teaching practice, as well as to support students. In terms of this investment, we have the following rates in the contract for elementary school, students using Power School Assessment and Analytics, for reading and math, that's $10 per student. For our secondary students who are using this tool, for four content areas, social studies, science, reading, and math, that's $15 per student. And the total costs from year to year vary based on the number of student users. So our school division started using interactive achievement, now Power School Assessment Analytics in 2010, and is planning to continue to use it again this year. According to this company's account team this morning, at least 124 school divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia now use Power School Assessment and Analytics. Again, we bring this information to you in hopes of the approval for these budgeted funds to be released. Are there any questions that you have that I can answer?
Yeah, so the, so the tests generated in terms of the selection of the items, that's based on decisions that a team, you know, a group of teachers makes, rather than, it's not a central office. It's like, these are the teachers working with the kids, this is what we're working on, and so we're going to pick these items, because they dovetail really well as an assessment tool with the instruction of.
So the short answer to that is, yes, and yes.
Yeah.
So there are a few tests throughout the year that are central office, our.
Well, I understand it, I'm just, that's one that I.
Content coordinators, but it's mostly our teachers and teams, and we value shorter, more frequent assessments can help to inform.
No, I think that's good, I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. Really appreciate your response here, because that's, that's, that's many well-spent, if it helps the teachers. Thank you.
Any other board member questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Thorpe, I appreciate it. That brings us to our action item for the evening, 9.01. Can I get a?
Can I get a motion for approval of the personnel actions that's presented this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve personal actions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Zerzi, take the vote, please.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 10.01, revisory code and rename policy AFC, evaluation of teachers to policy GCN, evaluation professional staff. Mrs. Young, Mrs. Cook, Mr. Baker, Dr. Heron, can I try to help? Yeah.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Heron, we have two policies we're going to talk about tonight. It's basically just taking from the board's policies and the As to bring them to the G policies, which are the HR policies. The first policy is policy AFC, the evaluation of teachers. Just looking to re-code and rename this policy to GCN, the evaluation of professional staff, more to match the VSBA policies. This policy was last revised in 2001, and just like I said, to move it from the A policies to the G policies. Nothing's changing with our current practice. This was reviewed by the policy committee on August the 9th of this year, and our attorney has also reviewed this and recommended this change.
Okay. Any questions, comments from board members? Okay.
The next policy is policy AFD, education support evaluation, certainly. Just want to re-code and rename this policy to GDN, evaluation of support staff, to match the VSBA policies. Again, this was last reviewed in 2001. Want to move it from the As, which is the board policies, to the G, which are the personnel policies. Nothing's changing with our current practice. It was reviewed by the policy committee on August the 9th of this year, and our attorney has reviewed this change.
Okay, great, thank you. Any, any questions, comments from board members?
Housekeeping.
Yep. Since 2001, that's one year after Stonehouse is open.
Apparently just yesterday.
1003, revise, re-code, and rename policy BHBA, school board conferences, conventions, workshops, and memberships in BHB, school member members in-service activities.
All right, so we don't have staff to rely on here. So essentially, in short, we had BHBA, which in VSBA land taxonomy, in VSBA taxonomy doesn't exist, but they do have BHB, which is exactly the same. So we're just taking the A off and making a few, you know, a few edits that are more in line with the VSBA policies. It's fairly simple housekeeping.
So it seems that there's a lot of housekeeping in 2001.
Cleaning up the mess was left in 2001.
A lot of things have changed.
Seems like 2001 people had a lot of, they were doing a lot of policy changes.
Didn't you say there was an intern that was, or did I make that up? We had some step that we did. Step, going back and looking at it, because we all, because really 1974, '76 wasn't so good.
Okay, any questions or concerns about this policy? So we'll, before Mrs. Cook tells me, we'll add this to consent agenda?
Sounds like a plan.
For our next meeting? That brings us to 11.01, board members' comments. Comments from board members this evening? Dr. Beers?
I didn't have a chance to talk about it, but I, I was really impressed and very much enjoyed the convocation, as I, and as I pointed out to Dr. Heron, when she did get up to dance, I was, I was fully expecting to see some serious step dancing up there on the stage. But I didn't see it, but, but, but it's all right. She cuts a rug, and it was unavoidable, we had to get up there.
Maybe next time.
Yeah, maybe next time. But I just, I felt such, such a positive energy throughout the audience during that convocation, and was very impressed. The, and I very much enjoyed visiting the two schools that I did today on opening day. As I told a number of people, one of the highlights for me at the James River Elementary School was having lunch with a group of first graders. And I, unbeknownst to me, before I got there, I was able to have two of my most favorite dishes on one plate. I had an enormous quantity of french fries and a couple of wonderful pieces of pizza. It was like, it just made the day. I didn't, I didn't really have to eat much tonight.
Should've gone with the ice cream afterwards.
Yeah. But I did have, I had fresh fruit. I did have some fruit.
There you go.
But I also would very much want to applaud teachers, administrators, and also the students and the parents for the recognition that our students are getting at, at a national level, particularly for, for academic and also the arts and reasons. And I, I think it's just a real tribute to, to everybody that's involved in the education of the children. That's it.
I would like to get some time later this fall to take a look. I know that Mrs. Cook and members of the cabinet did attend the classroom to court, to prison courthouse.
Classrooms, not courtrooms, yeah.
Classrooms, not courtroom. And I think it's a topic, the good news is we are not in the worst schools in the division. Sad news is we're not in the better performing, so I think that that is something we need to look at. It's hard to educate our youngsters if they're not in school. And being able to attend school and having schools that are safe and students participate is really important if we're going to be successful, particularly with those reporting groups of lower economic ESL, special ed, and so we're going to have to, I'm looking forward to hearing when administration, the cabinet comes to us with suggestions and how to help with that.
Same thing that Dr. Beers said, it was really fun for me to participate in the convocation this year. It was my first convocation, so I didn't know what to expect. I thought it was great that every single school, they let out with the banner that they were accredited. And I was just thinking to myself, thank goodness they all were, because that would really be embarrassing for the one school that was, did not get that banner before they did their, their, you know, little, I guess?
Shout-out.
Shout-out. So that was great. The, it seems like the morale seems very high, and it followed through with the first day of school today, so that's all great. I, I am concerned when we have community members like Mr. Kennedy that come and bring up some, I think, very, very important things for us to, as great as, as we are in getting accredited and all the wonderful things that the school system does, and it does wonderful, wonderful things. I think it's also important for us to be in a state of continual improvement in those areas, anything with the achievement gap, the SOL reports that came out, the disparities between some of the reports that he mentioned in his comments tonight. I think, and I'm sure it's of a concern to administration as well, so I also am like Mrs. Minor, and I would welcome any kind of response that the school administration can provide for approving it.
I'd just also add my appreciation of convocation, that was lots of fun. I do have a request that next year you, you do Riverdance for us. I think you would do great at that. But I enjoy convocation, I appreciate it. It has made me more aware, especially between graduation and convocation, about how appreciative I am of the, your cabinet and the hard work that they, they do. There's so much that goes unnoticed, but I do appreciate it. And I enjoyed watching the little kids this morning down at the bus stop. They were very excited, and, and I'm excited for school, too, so.
I'm very excited that school started today. But I, I too want to add to everyone's congratulations about, and thanks about convocation. Dr. Heron, you did a fabulous job, your team did a fabulous job, the schools did a great job. Thank you, Silver Camp Smith, for your hard work and assisting me. I appreciate that. But the schools were incredibly impressive, and the shout-outs clearly were something that they worked hard on and were wonderfully creative and beyond anything that I had anticipated or expected, so that was really fabulous. I also want to thank everybody again for your work on RFP. I think that's exciting, and I will work very hard to get that, so it hits the paper Saturday, so we can shave a few days off if at all possible. Today, also going to James River and Berkeley and Warhol was fabulous. I was really impressed by how smoothly everything was running and just the, the looks on everyone's faces, the students were there, ready to learn. Couple of yawns, couple of yawns, it was fabulous. And then, you know, just a comment about the classrooms, not courtrooms, conference, it was fabulous. I think I sent an email out recently with the link to the webpage, and, you know, there's, I had the benefit of, that one of the things that our division was honored for was its work for PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention System?
TSF.
Yes.
Multi-tier systems.
Yeah, that. Sorry.
What's your close?
It used to be PBIS. It used to be PBIS, yeah, just like Stonehouse was built yesterday. Sorry. But anyway, I, in wearing another hat, I had the good fortune of being able to see Ms. Bourgeois and Dr. Butler present that, that work that's underway in our schools, and it helped me understand what's going on here in the sort of long term. So I wonder if there's an opportunity to share that in some way with the board, if there's a one or two-pager that, because it's, I think, helpful to understand where the schools are along in that timeline and process in terms of making sure that every student has an opportunity to succeed and achieve to the best of their ability.
Good.
All right.
Okay. I was disappointed I had to miss convocation this, this year. Convocation is always one of my most favorite events of the school year, and probably behind graduation. The energy is always in that room, and I understand Mrs. Cook did an exceptional job in filling in for me, so I do appreciate that. Back to, back to the first day of school and the excitement, the freshness. I enjoyed calling my kindergarten students and, and talking to them. I know Julie, Mary, Kiri did that as well. And it's always, always fun to talk to, talk to them, you know. Granted, they're graduating in 2029 or some, some number, but as one who's had two that have gone through and one that's almost done, it seems like?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. So enjoy those years and, and embrace that time. But, you know, the logistics of the first day of school, and actually the logistics of every day of school, running the buses, transporting them to the, to the students to the schools, the multiple bus runs that those buses do, is, when they get, when they get received at each of the schools, the logistics of doing all that is truly very impressive, and I don't want to think that we take that for granted. Mr. Snipes and your team do an exceptional job, and, you know, their transportation staff today that was on those phones and, and working to make sure that every, every kid got to school and that every kid got from school. I want to just say my appreciation for that. The RFP that we talked about earlier, 30 days, part of, part of that discussion that we have that, that evening, I also want to talk about the SOP that I know Mrs. Young has put a lot of work on, and I just think it'd be a good time to have a, and Mrs. Cook to have a good, you talked to me, she talked to everyone else. Be a good time to get that, have that discussion as well, so want to kind of try to see if we make sure we can combine both of those at the same time, so keep that, keep that on your, on your radar screen. So with that, upcoming events, Policy Committee, September 13th, Where Did It Go, just left me, and Back to School Night for the elementary schools, September 29th at 6 o'clock, it'll be at all the elementary schools. Other events coming up, check those schools' websites, the fall athletics are well underway with football and field hockey and all the rest, so, you know, go support the, go support the, the students and the schools, and see the school spirit and the marching bands and all the rest of it associated with our athletic activities. Next, board meeting, closed session, September 20th, over at the county in Building F at 6 o'clock, a closed session, followed at 6:30 by a regular meeting, also over in Building F. And then October 4th, here in Room 300 at the annex, we'll have closed session at 6 o'clock, and then work session, action items at 6:30, also here at the annex in this room in 309. Mrs. Zerzi, I think we have our agenda set for our next board meeting, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.